Good morning, everybody. I'll call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, August 12th. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right. If you'd join me for the pledge of allegiance, and then we'll have an invocation led by Reverend Bruce Beatty of the Church of the Nazarene in Ottawa.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
-to the United States of America- To the republic-
The republic which stands-
One nation-
One nation-
Under God-
Under God- And of his own-
Justice-
Liberty and justice for all.
All right. Go ahead, Reverend Beatty.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Again, the opportunity to be able to provide the invocation. Let's just bow our heads and our hearts. Father, we give you praise for this day that you have given us, and we would just ask that you would lead and guide and direct in all the activities of the day, and particularly this commission meeting as they meet together to discuss and to decide action for our community and for our county. Would ask that you would just help them to be wise in their decisions and discussions, and that you would lead and guide and direct in what would be the best for the county and for citizens. Would ask that you would be with our emergency and first responders, our law enforcement, that you would keep them safe, no matter what they may face. They're the first ones to kind of come on scenes, and they see and participate in things that many of us have no idea. So, we would just ask for your hand of protection upon them. Be with all the county workers, whatever department they're in, whether they're working in an office, working out on the streets and the roads. Just keep everyone safe. Lord, we appreciate this place you've given us to live. We appreciate our county and all that goes on, and we would just pray the best for every person that lives here, for all that we can do. Help us do our part with all this COVID, to be safe and to protect one another. Again, Lord, we would ask for your blessing upon this commission meeting today, and in your holy name we pray. Amen. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Appreciate you. All right. Appreciate you being on. Derek, do you have anything to add to correspondence organizational business?
No, sir.
All right. Janet, do we have any public comment?
We should have one public comment. Diana Dean requested, Diana Starsen Dean requested, and she is on here.
All right. Well, a citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda, may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. Commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Items, discussion should be limited to items, excuse me, to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regards to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. So, good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Diana Starsen Dean with the Franklin County Historical Society. I just wanted to touch base and let you know about what's going on. Starting next week, we have been very busy at the Historical Society despite the pandemic, and in some ways because of it. People have had a lot more time to interact with us. So, we are finding that we're reaching a whole new audience online that we didn't before. Between 15 and 30,000 people a week right now on social media. We have pretty much stayed the course with memberships and a lot of new members who have found us. We have about the same number of researchers because people have been home and have had time to work on things like their genealogy. And we've also received a lot of donations because during the stay-at-home orders, a lot of people were cleaning out their homes and their barns. So, we've been pretty busy. The only area that's really down right now, of course, is museum attendance. We weren't open. We're currently open limited hours, and it's a real challenge because finding cleaning supplies and also not being able to sanitize artifacts has been a challenge for us. But what I really wanted to tell you about is what's starting next week. This is a conversation we started to have many months ago. On August 18th, it is the 100th anniversary of when Tennessee ratified the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote. And with Tennessee, it became part of the Constitution. And so, we are kicking off a suffrage commemoration that day, and I wanted to let you know about it. It's a little different than what we had initially planned. We'll be having an online program through our Facebook page. Diane Eichhoff and Erin Barnhart, who are historians, will be presenting "The Long Road to Women's Suffrage in Kansas." And then Tuesday morning, we are setting up an outdoor exhibit at the courthouse, which will include the names of 150 people in Franklin County who worked for women's suffrage, and their names will be on individual signs all over the courthouse lawn, and that will be up throughout next week. So, that hopefully people will have a chance to walk through it, and because it's outdoors, it's a safer exhibit than coming inside to the courthouse. We also have a small pop-up exhibit from the National Archives called "Rightfully Hers" that will open at the depot. And then later this year, we will be hosting a Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area exhibit that is called "Demanding a Greater Future: Celebrating a Centennial of Women's Suffrage," and that is about the work that women in Kansas and Missouri have done to gain the right to vote. It was a really interesting project to find the women in Franklin County who worked towards suffrage. They were everything from college students to doctors to journalists to professors to rural women to city women to grandmothers, and there were many town founders, actually, and town leaders who were men who also were part of it, including George Washburn. He was a big person supporting the suffrage movement, and of course, he designed the courthouse. So, there's something really lovely about being able to include his name in that group. I will say that exhibit is an outdoor exhibit, and it's designed to travel. So, if your community is from outside of Ottawa, we would love to bring it to your town. It's paid for. It would cost you nothing. We just need to know where to set it up so that people can come see it. So, if you're, Eric, because we know not everyone can get to Ottawa next week. So, let me know if you'd like to host it for a few days. We'd be happy to bring it to you. So, I invite you to join us on Facebook on Tuesday night at 7:00 at the Old Depot Museum Facebook page for that program, and also to stop by the courthouse next week and take a look at the names of the amazing people who helped make it possible for women to vote.
All right. Thanks for the update. If you ever, as a community partner, if you ever want to give an update, just let us know ahead of time. We'd be happy to put you on correspondence and organizational business, part of our agenda, and that way you have your own time set apart. Everybody will, anybody who may be interested in listening in will know ahead of time, and if you have anything you want to share, documents or anything, we can post those to our agenda also. So-
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Any questions for Diane? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for the update. All right. Consent agenda today would be consider approving minutes from our August 5th meeting. Minutes for our budget study, budget hearing. We haven't got those sent out yet, so we'll just grab those next meeting. And anyways, consent agenda for, we'll just include the meeting minutes for August 5th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Commissioner Dunn makes the motion.
All right. Roy, it sounds like wants the second. Is that true, Roy?
Yeah.
All right.
Commissioner Stottermeyer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thanks. On the items of business, the first of which would be consider soliciting bids for the Annex remodel project. Brandon Sands, are there maintenance directors on?
Yeah, this is Brandon. Can y'all hear me?
Sure can.
Yes.
Good. Yeah, so this is something that we've been talking about and working on for some time now. We've been working with Falk Architects. They've been finishing up the plans for the remodel, which you all should have had sent to you, those final plans. So, at this point, with your approval of the, of those plans and the solicitation of bids, we'll get started on putting out an RFP to find a general contractor to start bidding on this project so we can start moving on to the next steps.
This is Derek. I would jump in and add, this, a simpler version of this drawing has already been in front of you, and you already indicated that you were okay with it. I do want to point out one change that was made. We did remove one of the offices. We had a spare office on what would be the west wall, but what we found was that we weren't, we want to increase the size of that conference room over there so that we can comfortably accommodate department head and elected official meetings with that office there. We just really couldn't do that, and so we asked that that be removed. I will tell you, just the general thought behind that was just a fair office to accommodate growth and/or have an office for commissioners to use when they needed it. In lieu of that, we have two small conference rooms that in and of themselves are the size of offices, and we will have computers in both of them, and we will gladly have a setup in one so that any of you can use that when you want to come in and conduct county business. And so, I think practically speaking, this layout still accomplishes the same thing. And then the only other, and I don't know if this was actually a change or not, I can't remember the original drawing, but I was discussing with Sari whether or not to, her two staff members needed cubicles or offices. And what we found basically was that cubicles are actually a lot more expensive. They are portable, but I guess drywall is cheaper than, you know, the walls of a cube. And so, this drawing does have offices for both of Sari's staff members, which again, will actually represent a cost savings to us. So, there's really nothing else here that is appreciably different. It just has a lot more detail. We hope, having this set of plans, that this will be a more enticing project to bid on. Brandon's been working pretty hard on reaching out to contractors. We'd like to have a lot of interest in this project. And so, yeah, him or I, either one, will stand for any questions that you have. Thanks, Cole.
Trust everybody's been able to look at the attachments, look over the prints. Of course, we've had those for a while, a simpler version of them. But any questions before we look to solicit bids? All right. Looks like all those conversations we've had up to now paid off. So, would anybody like to make a motion to solicit bids for the Annex remodel project?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll make that motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Commissioner Howard, I'll second it.
All right.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Our second item of business is to discuss and consider for approval Franklin County's CARES Act Direct Date Spending Plan. Go ahead, Derek.
All right. You all got an email from me on this yesterday evening. This is a plan that the state requires us to submit in order to utilize these funds. The email kind of sets out some of the rationale that was utilized. So, we hired a consultant with O'Brien to assist us with this process. It's, I will tell you, working with them, they've been incredibly helpful, but between all of our schedules, it's been very difficult to find sustained periods of time to work on this. They, of course, are representing numerous counties in Kansas as well as counties and municipalities and other states. Like, this truly is an unprecedented time for consulting firms like them because every state is in this. I mean, the Federal CARES Act applies to all states, and so finding a time for all of us to sit down has been a challenge, but we were able to do that, and we put the plan that is in front of you together. Off the top, there are a few things I want to say about this. Our consultant urged us to take care of taxing entities first and foremost with this funding. The state has a three-phase plan that they intend to utilize to distribute these CARES Act funds. Schools, for example, and we'll talk through this, and schools are receiving funding, but we do think that schools will have another opportunity in phases two and three to receive more funds. Colleges and universities weren't addressed in this round because there's some belief that they will have the opportunity in later rounds to obtain funding. We have a small cutout for community-based programs, and we'll talk about that. But again, there've been other funding mechanisms available for businesses, for example, with the, you know, the P3 relief program and some of these community development block grant programs. It's our consultant's belief that this is really for municipalities, especially cities and counties, this is the best opportunity and the only known opportunity that we're going to have, and so we were encouraged to take advantage of that. With that being said, you can see the recommended breakout before you. Fifty percent of this funding, and to be clear, there's just over $5.2 million that we were awarded. Fifty percent of that, almost 51%, we are recommending be allocated to Franklin County. Twenty-five percent roughly allocated to the cities, and that will be on a population basis. Fifteen percent allocated to schools, and you all have a decision to make on whether or not you want to do that on total number of students or total number of students on free and reduced lunches, but you've got both of those breakouts in front of you. And then there's roughly 10% left that we have broken into two categories, one of which is a strategic reserve, and that is designed to keep some money unallocated because this has been such a rapidly changing pandemic. We don't know what may happen in the next several months, and so we want to keep a chunk of this unallocated so that if we need to allocate it, we can. And then another roughly 5%, again, for community-based programs, which we are going to recommend that be assisting our community partners with COVID-related expenses and preventative measures. You know, I know I've heard from FCDC. I've heard from the Elizabeth Layton Center. There are a couple of others that have reached out. And this will allow us to put together a program and invite all of our partners to apply, and then we can allocate funds from that $250,000 to help assist them. And so, that's generally an overview of this. How this works is we are not writing checks to any of these entities. And so, you see some of these small towns, you know, Williamsburg, for example, has been allocated over 30 grand, Princeton, 21 grand. We're not cutting checks. Basically, what that means is they have that amount of spending authority, but that is all subject to our review and approval. And so, we are going to have a meeting with all of these entities and tell them, you know, to the extent that you have needs and want to use this, that is all going to flow through us. So, that will give us, because at the end of the day, it's Franklin County who is responsible for this. So, if Williamsburg, for example, has COVID-related needs, they will reach out to our consultant, and they will work with them on taking care of that up to that allocated amount of, in Williamsburg's case, $30,000. So, that's generally how it works. In addition to our spending plan, you also have a list of incurred expenses and future projects and expenses. Those future projects still have to be approved by the state. In fact, the state still has to sign off on this entire plan, but the projects that you see on that list, they did pass a preliminary review from our consultant. Our consultant is also willing to provide us with what they call an eligibility memo. So, if there are projects that are kind of on the border of whether or not they're going to be allowed, they will put a memo together whereby they basically research and include what they've seen in other municipalities, other states. But again, at the end of the day, the state's got to approve this before we spend these funds. So, if the state says, you know, for example, we have a radio tower upgrade in there. If the state says it's good to go, then I think we're pretty comfortable on doing that, but our consultant would also provide us with some added assurance via that memo. And so, with all that being said, what questions do you have for me?
This is Commissioner Howard. I had a question earlier on the allotted money for the cities, and I did reach out to Derek this morning before this meeting started, and we talked about that. My question basically was what Derek just addressed as far as that is just a lot of money. That's not going to be just a check written to them. I guess my only question would be if the money's not spent to the cities, then that could be used for other places, correct?
Yeah. So, we'll work with the cities early on, and if we quickly find out that they, they're not going to be able to spend this, then we will submit an amendment of our plan to the state. Yeah, whereby we, I mean, I know that at the county level, we do have additional things that we could use funding for. We may find when we reach out to community partners. I don't believe this to be the case because I have not, you know, we just, we haven't heard from a ton of them, but it could be the case that there's more need there. But yes, any, any amount of this funding that does not end up needing to be used, we can submit an amendment to make sure that it gets put to productive use because at the end of the day, if it's not used, it's going to go back to the state.
This Commissioner Dunn, the only question I had, I noticed that Franklin County had itemized all their needs down to the penny, but the rest of them was just a lump sum. Will they eventually, I don't know, is allocated by population, will eventually, will they have to request, request their funding all the way down to a penny too?
Yeah, that's a great question, Roy. And yes, they are doing that. They, the city, I don't think the city of Ottawa has done it yet at that level, but they, yes, they will work with our consultant, and they're going to have to do that. I mean, again, we're not going to give anyone a check. So, if the city has projects that they want to do, then they're going to have to get us actual quotes of, down to the penny of what that project is, and then we will still have the ability, if we think the connection to COVID is too, isn't there, I guess, then we will still have the ability to say, yeah, we're not comfortable approving this purchase. So, yes, all of these entities are going to have to give us proof down to the penny of what these expenses are, and then we will effectively reimburse them.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I can see that, it seems to me like maybe I could see the schools actually coming up with more expenses than the cities as far as COVID-related expenses.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely true, and I know that's something that Janet and I spoke with our consultant about when we first started putting this together. We thought, you know, 15% for schools seemed potentially a little low, but again, the schools are going to have, at least we all strongly believe, they are going to have the ability to obtain additional funding in the second and third rounds of this process through the state. And so, and they also, they have other resources at their disposal that cities and counties really don't. And so, that's why the consultant recommended that this breakout be what it is. So, but yeah, I would anticipate the schools receiving additional funding via the state.
This is Commissioner Howard. I do have one question. I was just sitting here thinking as Diane brought up the schools. We've addressed the schools, the area cities, the county. Does our local hospital, would that fall into any of this?
There is nothing that I guess would keep us, that would keep us from potentially providing our local hospital with funding. Again, that, that isn't really the emphasis of these funds, and with the hospital's affiliation, you know, they may be, you know, I, I, I'm not their finance officer, but I, my understanding is, and part of the reason for the affiliation was the influx of revenues. So, I don't, I don't know that they're hurting for money at the hospital, frankly. But yes, in theory, we could allocate some of this to them, but I think we're trying to help entities that are in a little bit more difficult position.
Right. I just was thinking about that when she was talking about the schools. That's all I have.
This is Colt. I don't have any really questions. I just want to say I really like this plan. I like especially that there's a third party's eyes all over it, and, you know, for being a new program that, you know, this kind of uncharted territory, we're able to start a kind of a standardized place, you know, and that everything, take the time to dig into this plan and read it, and everything's well thought out and explained. It's a very logical, logical plan. So, I'm happy with what's in front of us. Just wanted to say that.
And I appreciate that, Cole. I will tell you, we're not, Franklin County is not in unique territory here, and I asked that question to our consultant so many times. I, you know, what is your Riley Counties and some of your, some of your other similarly situated counties? Like, what does their breakdown look like? And I was given repeated assurances that, you know, this roughly 50% to the counties, 25% to the cities, and 15% to schools, that that's really what they're striving for and really what they're seeing. I will, and I explained this in my email last night, but when you look at, if there are questions about, you know, like the county's allocation and it being at 50%, so much of that has to do with the fact that we operate the health department. My staff and I, and you all know this, we've been at the center of the local response to COVID-19. And that's not to say that it hasn't imposed challenges for cities and schools. It absolutely has, but this has been a county response. This has been our responsibility. If you break- If you break these costs down, eh, between nine hundred and fifty and a mi- thousand and a million dollars, like my, my rough notes are nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of this can be directly attributed to the health department. Uh, you know, we're, we're the only organization on this list that has a health department. So right there, you're, you're an additional million dollars. And then when you look at the staff time that the county's administrative team has into this, you think about my time, you think about Janet's time, Casey's time, Alan, Tom, Nick. Um, there's so many of our administrative team that has spent so much time on this. Well, that is all reimbursable through this program. A, a, and, you know, our consultants looking at us telling us you would be crazy to not claim that because that's, you know, that's an eligible reimbursement. And so obviously that number is reflected in our total. And so the percentages really do stand to reason if you look into the numbers. And, and we've tried to provide you with the information to do that. And so are there any questions about? Cause what, what I'm going to ask for is two things, that you approve this spending plan, which is the document that has the percentage breakout. And then I also want you to approve the list of expenses, both the already incurred and the future costs. Uh, admittedly, this is such a new process that nobody knows exactly what it is that the state is requiring in terms of approval. So I would be more comfortable just taking that blanket approach to this. Before you can approve the spending plan, we need to decide how do you want to allocate money to the schools? Um, if you look on that plan, you've got, um, it allocated by number of students and then number on free and reduced lunches. And there are a couple of schools, Ottawa and Wellsville in particular, where that number will swing depending on which approach you choose. And so Cole, I will turn it over to you to lead that discussion with the board. But that's something that we really need the board to decide.
Uh, this Commissioner Dunn, I got one more question, Derek.
Yeah, sure.
Is, is this time period, uh, to the end of the year? Or what, what is the time period of this, uh?
Yeah. Y- yes, it, it is-
Go ahead, Derek.
Yes, it is from March, um, through the end of the year. And, and there are various deadlines, um, from now through the end of the year for submitting certain, you know, reimbursements. But yes, um, these, we are allowed to claim future costs and expenses through the end of December.
Okay. I just, I thought a lot of them might be speculating on future costs. And I guess it is through the end of the year.
Yeah, it a- it absolutely is. And, and obviously these numbers are gonna change. I mean, we have, you look at that list of future expenses. We have amounts allocated for increased testing supplies, for PPE orders, both ongoing and to increase our surplus. And all of that is, could potentially change depending on cost. I mean, these are our, uh, best effort, good faith quotes that we've received. But they will change.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. Thank goodness that we hired a consultant. I mean, I think definitely he's already paid for himself by suggesting probably things that we wouldn't have thought to, to, to submit. Yeah, I think you, you feel much better going forward with somebody's, has a little bit more expertise.
Yeah, and I, yeah, go ahead, Cole. Let's talk about-
Oh, no, I didn't mean to cut you off there, Derek, if, if you wanted to respond before I transitioned to the school discussion.
Uh, well, yeah, I, I think in, in response to Commissioner Dickinson, I, I would agree. I think the value that, that the county has especially is they've been able to provide perspective on what other communities are doing. And that has brought me peace of mind. I mean, without that, we would, I mean, certainly, I, you know, Janet and I reach out to other organizations all the time. But they've just, the fact that they already have that knowledge and they've just been a good conduit for that. And so, yeah, I, I agree. I, I'm pleased with our decision.
All right. Well, we do need to make a decision on, uh, the school, uh, how we're gonna distribute those funds. Our choices are between, um, going off of population of students per school district or to, um, use the population of students on free and reduced lunch. Of course, everybody probably knows, but free and reduced lunch is kind of a, um, indicator or bellwether for schools. Uh, it, it indicates the population of students you're s-, uh, that school district serves and their socioeconomic status. Uh, obviously, if you're on free and reduced lunch, you come from a lower, uh, income, uh, family. There's indications that that school district has more, uh, uh, folks in poverty. So, um-
Yeah, I don't know. That's, uh, Cole?
Yeah, go ahead, Don.
Don, I, I, I agree with you. We need to figure that one out. The only catcher on the, on the meal deal, I heard this morning that Ottawa would be going half days. Uh, half of the school will go one half of the day and the other half will go the other half of the day. So I think they got a lot of figuring out to do because half of the kids won't go to school until after lunch. So-
Yeah, and this, this money wouldn't be to pay for the free and reduced lunch. It would be, the free and reduced figure is just kind of a bellwether of, uh, it indicates what population that school district's serving, if they're more at need, students.
Oh, I don't know.
Why that information's being offered.
I, I think it, it, my opinion, just go by the numbers.
Okay.
We all have, they all have the same need for this money, whether they're need the free lunch or not. I mean, Byron doesn't know who needs a free lunch and not needs a free lunch. I think we need to just go ahead, in my opinion, uh, uh, provide the service to all kids, no matter their need.
I, I hear you saying it costs the same amount to, to protect a student regardless of their, uh, economic conditions.
Right.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I would agree. I don't think that, uh, COVID cares whether the, the child is on free or reduced lunches. I think it should be per child, um, and that would be the number we would use.
All right. I hear you, uh, leaning towards population. Um, Roy, what are your thoughts?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, allocate it by, uh, population.
Okay, can I ask you to hold on to that motion till everybody gets a chance to speak?
Sure.
All right, I'll come back to you. Rick, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, my only question on the free and reduced lunch, I really didn't see the numbers, how much that would change? Um, Derek, you have that in front of you, what that would actually change? The difference between going by the, the student, the amount of students compared to going with the free and reduced lunch money?
Yeah.
How much that would change this?
I do, Rick. And, and for Central Heights and West Franklin, i- it's not a pronounced change either way. Um, for Ottawa and Wellsville, it is. Um, if you do percentage of students, um, total students, Wellsville's gonna be allocated a hundred and forty thousand. If you do percentage of free and reduced lunches, that number goes all the way down to eighty-eight thousand. And Wellsville just doesn't have the number on free and reduced lunches. So that's gonna be a, a fifty-two-ish thousand dollar swing, which is massive when you're only talking about a hundred and forty grand. On the other hand-
So where would that?
It would go to Ottawa. Um, Ottawa, um, is going to get roughly fifty grand less if you do percentage of, or if you do total students. You do total students, they're gonna get, you know, roughly four hundred and thirty-six thousand. If you do percentage of free and reduced lunches, that will increase all the way up to almost four hundred and ninety thousand. So it really swings between Ottawa and Wellsville. If you use total students, then Wellsville's gonna fare better. If you use total free and reduced lunches, then Ottawa's gonna fare better.
Okay, that answers my question. It looks to me then, I would probably go with total students also. That looks more fair to me.
All right. And that's the, I'd say you can, if you open the second of the three attachments, it's at the bottom line. Uh, that, that is numbers are broke out, so. All righty. I can agree with the logic everybody's given. And, uh, sounds like we have a consensus to move forward with, uh, uh, distributing the school, uh, portions of these funds based on, uh, actual student population. Do you need a motion for that, Derek?
Um, you can. I don't know that we do, but Roy's made one. So if you want to second it, I'm still gonna ask for a motion approving the whole plan. But you can do a motion approving this piece. There's nothing wrong with that.
All right. Roy, you said you wanted to make a motion. Is that the motion you wanted to make to allocate the money based on student population?
Yes, that's right. That's right.
All right. Is there a second?
Don, I'll tag in it.
All right.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right.
Cole, this is Derek. Before I, uh, before I ask you to call for a motion on the plan, um, Janet, is there anything, you and I have worked very closely on this. Is there anything that you feel like I have left out that you want to add to this plan?
No, I'd just like to reiterate that, that we, that we've worked with our consultant hand in hand on this, um, all through the process. And we feel like what, what we're bringing you today is a, is a, a good representation of how we actually plan to spend the money. However, that being said, there were some questions asked about what if the cities don't spend the money? What if things change? And there is a process for amending this plan. So if at any time, you know, things change and, and, um, we see that someone's not going to, to spend the money and they've indicated that to us. And we have some documents that we'll be getting out to all of these different entities, um, with agreements on how they'll get reimbursed and all of these things. We'll be working with all of these partners very closely. So, but we can make amendments to this plan on behalf of one of our partners that we're going to be, uh, allocating money to and on behalf of our, our own organization. So I just want you guys to know that, that this is going to be a very fluid process where we're all working together. And us submitting the plan does not stop the work on this process, does not, um, set everything in stone. So I think that's really important to remember.
All right. Are you ready to, uh? Okay. We'd be looking for a motion then to, uh, approve the spending plan, wouldn't we, Derek?
That's correct, yep.
All right. Anybody like to make a motion?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Thanks, Roy.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right. It's in my understanding, we need to circle back around and approve the already incurred expenses? Is that right, Derek?
Well, I, I, yeah, I think just, and I apologize, I, for what are probably redundant motions. But I would just feel more comfortable i- if we had a, a motion to approve the incurred expenses. And then what will be a third motion to approve the, uh, planned, uh, future expenses.
All right, better be safe than sorry. So is there a motion to approve the already incurred expenses that are, uh, attached on our agenda?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll make that motion.
All right. And I heard Don maybe wanted to make a second?
I bet.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All righty. And then we have the attached, uh, planned expenses for Franklin County. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve those?
Commissioner Dunn, make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
This is Don, I'll tag in it.
All righty.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, that takes us to staff reports. Did you have anything, Derek?
Uh, you know, Cole, I don't know that I do today. I, I think we've had so much time wrapped up in, in this CARESAC stuff that we had just had a discussion on and the budget, that that's, that's where so much of my time's been spent. So I'm, I don't have anything to add. And, and I think Nick is on the call and I'll let you transition to him.
That makes sense. All right, good morning, Nick.
Good morning.
Hello, Nick. There you are. Go ahead.
Good morning, this is Nick. Um, I will tell you, we're continuing to trace the positives. We are up to two hundred and ten total positive with the county. Uh, we've seen an increase of nine, or we, uh, see the increase of fifteen positives since Monday. Uh, had nine come in last night. We did work with Ottawa University, um, the Ottawa Family Physicians. Total tested of students at OU was six hundred and eighty-six. So we, we did get a good group of, of, uh, of tests with, with Ottawa University students. They've been good to work with. Um, we have had nine positives come from that group. One thing we're looking into now to see if those, all of those are asymptomatic, um, positives. It did come from that. So we're trying to figure out if those are actually active positives or those are people that could have been positive a month ago and they're still testing that way. So still treating them with quarantine, working through that. As I said, Ottawa University's been a great partner. We, uh, we have seen, uh, a, uh, a rise in, in people that are very sick from, from COVID. We have three hospitalized right now that, that I know of from our community. So I did get, uh, one more LPN hired. I anticipate them starting on Monday. Working on a replacement for a nursing supervisor that is leaving us on the fourteenth and working with the schools and nursing homes. So got a lot going on in the health department. Uh, I do appreciate you guys working to, uh, approve the funding because we will be needing some of those resources from that. I anticipate with expanded, uh, COVID check, uh, checkpoints and also for our flu and, um, at the school vaccines, which is ramping up very heavy right now. So we're trying to work through that. So with that being said, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Nick, I got one quick one. This is Commissioner Howard. Those positives that you got from, uh, Ottawa University, will they all go on Franklin County's? Or will they go back to the, if the students came from another county or another state or whatever? Will they be our numbers or will they go back to them?
That's a good question. Thank you for asking that. We, uh, we have noticed that some of them are not showing up in our county as our county people, which, um, I anticipated. We also have had a few of them show up in our county. So it was just how they put their address when they filled out the paperwork. And honestly, this morning, I'm in the process of navigating through that on our state reporting system, which has been kind of a nightmare on reporting positives. So- So Casey and I meet later today to figure out a way to do this. But some of them could show up on ours and some of them will show up in the communities that they came from.
Well, thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Alan Ratcliffe, are you on?
I'm on here. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Well, uh, we've been busy, very busy also, uh, supporting public health on a daily basis, not only with the command trailer, but with any of their other needs. And that goes anywhere from if they need any testing supplies or PPE down to Tom and I actually working and helping them with the testing. Uh, we assisted all three days, uh, helping with the testing at OU plus, uh, testing out at the trailer. And, uh, I do want to, uh, give a, a big thanks to our county Public Works for us being able to set the trailer there. And they hauled, uh, diesel fuel for the generator to us the last three weeks. Uh, with that being said, I want to also thank the City of Ottawa, um, Utilities Department for working with me the last couple of weeks and, uh, putting a drop in there for electrical. And as of, uh, Monday afternoon, we went on, uh, shore power. So the generator won't need to be run unless we move it from that site. Uh, so that'll be a big help for us. And it provides steady power to that trailer out there. Um, managing PPE, Derek mentioned, uh, having the surplus. Uh, we continue to have some difficulty getting, uh, PPE in here. But, uh, we are building up our stockpile. And, uh, we're hoping that, uh, in the next 30 days, we can increase that stockpile, uh, quite a bit. So we make sure we have enough. Um, also, we're doing weekly, uh, meetings with, uh, public health, uh, the hospital and all of the nursing homes. And part of what we've done this week is to ask them to give us their burn rate so we have an idea how much PPE they're actually using. Um, so that'll help us too with our, uh, surplus stockpile in case they become, uh, hard to get again. Um, not COVID related. I've got a couple of things that we've been working on. One is a mitigation plan that, uh, happened to be, it actually came at a bad time last year for us to, uh, have meetings and update it. If you'll remember, we had four or five declarations of disaster last year due to flooding. Uh, we're in a, uh, the state's doing regional mitigation plans. And they finished one up, uh, for us with, uh, we had a little bit of input on our projects. And, uh, I was going to present that to the commission in March. And we all know what happened in March with the COVID-19. So I'm hoping when we get a, a little bit of a break here in the next few weeks, we can have a, uh, study session and I can, uh, talk with you about our mitigation plan and, uh, the projects. And this is a plan that, uh, needs to be approved by the counties and cities and the participants. Uh, I think we got one or two water districts in it also in case, uh, mitigation funds come available, uh, that usually occur after disasters like the flood last year. And we're still working, and I'm sure, um, David can give more insight on this, but we're still working on the flooding disaster from last year. So there may be some funds in the next year come available for mitigation projects. Uh, another thing that happened is back in February, I was, uh, elected at the Homeland Security Council for the Northeast Region as their chair. I'd been vice chair since 2006 and was elected as chair for, uh, this year. So we've been working on projects, uh, at that level. We did actually, uh, have a couple of meetings, which we'd put most of them off, but we had deadlines like, uh, we've had here at the county level and had to have a couple of meetings. With that being said, uh, all of, uh, fiscal year 18 monies that was used for exercise and training had been moved into equipment, which gave us an opportunity, uh, to upgrade some of our homeland security equipment. As you know, the, uh, command trailer and the pickup that we, the one-ton pickup that we have that pulls it, our homeland security funds and regional assets. There's enough funding available to, uh, trade in that pickup and replace it with, uh, a new truck. And, uh, in working with Derek, um, we are in the process at the regional level of going out to bids for a new one-ton duly that will replace that pickup. Uh, right now, until I get bids back, I don't know if our, uh, pickup that we're driving now will go to Coffee County and theirs will be, uh, the trade-in or if ours will be the trade-in. But, uh, there's about $55,000 available there. And, uh, the only cost to the county will be just what we're spending now. And that's the maintenance on the new truck and also the insurance to cover it. So, uh, to me, that's good news for all of us. That's, uh, local funds that don't need to be spent that will pull all the trailers that we have, uh, available. And just, uh, another, speaking of the trailers, an update. Our tower trailer, uh, has been sitting over in Miami County for, uh, about the last four months. And hopefully in the next month or two, we'll, uh, be done using it when Miami County goes on the new state system and, uh, we can bring it back, uh, home. So with that, unless you got any questions, that's pretty much what we've been doing. We've been very busy, just as everybody else with the COVID, uh, response.
All right, any questions for emergency management? Appreciate the update. Alan? All right, let's move on to Sheriff Richards.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. Um, update from the jail. Uh, again, our inmate count continues to rise. And we have been, some of our struggles have been working with the state as far as getting inmates to, um, prison still. Um, those that are, that have been sentenced, there's a delay at the state level. Um, they've even changed some of their protocols almost daily. If we bring someone back from prison for a court date, um, they are refusing to take them back into prison until we have a COVID test done on them, um, even if they've never left our, our facility, our custody. So, um, we've been, it's been a struggle statewide with sheriffs to try to get an actual policy and/or some set of guidance and rules from, uh, from the state. Um, and we're not having much luck there. Um, our executive director from the Sheriff's Association is working directly with the, uh, Secretary of Corrections to see if we can't get something in place. But, uh, our staff has experienced a lot of frustration as far as the rules changing almost daily there, depending on who they talk to. So we're just trying to get something standing there. Um, as far as PPE, um, that might as well, um, has said that, that we are still struggling to get, um, gloves is, uh, the thing that we're, we're having a hard time finding. Uh, we have worked with emergency management. They're able to provide us some. And I understand there, they probably have the same, same struggles with those. But we're working with Alan and his, and Tom to get what we can. And, but all of our normal routes on that, um, are pretty much dried up. They don't have anything there, um, for us. So, and the last thing I have is that, uh, yesterday, uh, we had a conference call, uh, that several sheriffs, about 300 sheriffs across the country had a conference call with President Trump about, um, primarily talking about Operation Legend, um, which is a, uh, program where federal agents go in and assist law enforcement at a, at different, at the local and county level across the country to, uh, to attack violent crime and to, to address those issues. Um, Operation Legend is named after, um, a child, uh, named Legend, who was a homicide victim in Kansas City, Missouri. So it does have a good tie to our area. Um, I've also talked with, uh, had a meeting, um, with, uh, um, chiefs and sheriffs up in, uh, Wyandotte and Johnson County. Um, they are working directly with a lot of the federal agencies as part of that operation. And we have also a detective, you know, on the Northeast Kansas Drug Task Force. And so we, we are kind of involved with the things that go on with Operation Legend. And, um, it's a great cooperation, a great working relationship there. And, uh, they're, they're able to, they're making a good impact on, on finding a lot of these violent offenders and getting them off the street. So, um, it's a good, good program and, uh, we're glad to be a part of it. So if you guys have any questions for us, uh, for me, I'm happy to answer.
All right. Well, doesn't look like it. Thank you for the update and your time, Sheriff. Let's move on to Janet. Are you on?
Like Derek said, um, he and I have just been working really hard on the Spark Funds. Um, and my office staff's been working really hard on the canvas. So I'd just like to remind you, um, with the exception of, um, Commissioner Howard, who will be sitting out the canvas, um, just due to some personal things. Um, I am expecting all of you here at the courthouse shortly after your meeting ends here to canvass the election. We haven't noticed for 30 minutes following the meeting. So we'll probably plan to start that around 10:15.
All right.
Uh, this is Commissioner Howard. Uh, Janet, would you tell Jody thank you for me, for filling in for me?
Absolutely.
All right. Sounds good. Well, thank you. Let's move on to Commissioner's comments and board reports. Uh, Roy?
Uh, don't have anything.
All right. Don?
Oh.
All right. Ian? Sounds good. Ian?
Yes, I'm here. Um, I have a couple of things. I did go to my first, uh, Chamber Coffee on Friday. Uh, they've had a couple that I missed due to, um, being in quarantine. But this one was at, um, the home base. And you know that it's businesses like that that are keeping our sales tax up even in the middle of all this crisis. But if you have not been in the, the new Reimagine store, it is, um, they have so much more than they had when it, when it was DIY. And really, I don't know what you would need, um, for building or home that you couldn't get there. So it was, it was a small group, but it was a good group. Um, I also had a chamber board meeting by Zoom yesterday morning. And again, everybody, it's all about COVID. You know, what you can do, what you can't do, what you should do, um, and what you shouldn't do. So they, they decided to not have the leadership class this year just because they didn't want to have to do it all online. So that has been canceled. There is a, on Monday evening, there is a, a, um, farmer's market at the, uh, at Legacy Square. Um, and I think they're gonna have some food trucks and some live entertainment. So if you'd like to jump in there and, and check that out. And then the last thing is, you know, my very fir-, when I first, very first became a commissioner at the beginning of last year, one of the very first study sessions that we did was to take a tour of the buildings. And then we were presented a list of repairs that were needed across the board. And I pulled out that list this morning. And considering that we have been, um, under a declaration of emergency almost all of last year and almost all of this year, we have gotten so much of that done. Um, I'll use Derek's expression. Uh, I am incredibly proud that we have been able to take care of so many projects. And the projects this year were a couple of the, the very, the, the projects that were the most expensive. Um, and, and yet, so we're still getting, you know, we're still doing the business of the county and getting things done. And I am incredibly proud. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Rick?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Nor do I. So, all right. Derek, did you need anything before we look to wrap this up? Need to say anything?
I don't believe so. Thanks, Cole.
All right. Well, time's 9:35 and we look for a motion to adjourn. And, um, 30 minutes, we'll meet down at the courthouse.
It's just Don.
Commissioner Howard, make the motion.
Second.
All right. Very well, thank you. All in favor of adjourning? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.